Welcome, everybody, to today's legislative session for Thursday, November 6, 2025. I'll ask everybody to please silence your cellphones and electronic devices so as not to distract the meeting, and we'll call the meeting to order with a moment of silence and a pledge to the flag. Hey, we'll have roll call.
Benton.
Here.
Paduk.
Here.
Amo.
Here.
Vannelli.
Cheney.
Here.
Ellers.
Here.
Fagion.
Here.
Feller. Luhon.
Present.
Minuta.
Here.
O'Donnell.
Ramos.
Rivella.
Yeah.
Riskevich.
Yeah.
Sassy.
Yeah.
Sierra. Stenganga.
Yeah.
Sutherland.
Yeah.
Tortel.
Yeah.
Tui. Hines, eighteen present, three absent.
Thank you, and let the record reflect that legislator Feller is excused, and now we'll hear from Majority Leader Benton.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. The legislature for the month of November would like to recognize American Diabetes Month, National Alzheimer's Disease Month, National Home Care Hospice and Palliative Care Month, Men's Health Awareness Month, Military Family Month, Veterans Day on November 11th, which is now part of Operation Green from the 4th to the 11th for the veterans, World Kindness Day, November 13th, American Education Week, November 13th to 17th, Thanksgiving, of course, on the 27th, and November 1st should be recognized also as the 342nd birthday of Orange County. Thank you, sir.
Thank you. Now, I'm going to ask the executive branch has asked to have a little bit of time to address the legislature and the residents of Orange County, so if the deputy county executive would like to approach with his team to the podium, thank you.
Good afternoon, everyone. Thank you for this opportunity to address an important issue with you today. We want you to know that the county administration is fully engaged with several partners in addressing the problems caused by the federal government's temporary inability to properly fund its agencies. I need my glasses. Particularly the agency that provides for the Supplemental Nutritional Assistance Program known as SNAP. We are in regular contact with our state social services agencies, with our county staff involved in providing social services, the New York State Association of Counties, and with the Hudson Valley Regional Food Bank. We share information and strategies to best address the disruption of food benefits to our residents who are dependent on SNAP assistance. I can report the following of what has been learned from our conversations with these various groups. One, the state government has just provided $65 million in assistance to address food insecurity created by the delays in the SNAP benefits statewide. $65 million in support will be dispersed to the regional food banks to cover deficiencies in food availability until a successful resolution to the temporary federal impasse is achieved. Two, we have held several discussions with, excuse me, we have held discussions with the Hudson Valley Regional Food Bank to coordinate county efforts to disperse food to appropriate facilities and partners using county resources for transportation needs, when and if they're needed. Three, we have identified and provided public information of the locations of many food banks and pantries throughout Orange County by municipality. We have posted this information online so all citizens in need can easily identify locations for free food and necessities. Four, the current program that Orange County provides in cooperation with the Hudson Valley Food Bank, known as the Backpack Program, essentially food for kids in need identified by school officials, will continue. Throughout the school year and in the summer, food is provided by the Hudson Valley Food Bank to the schools for children in need. That program has run for a number of years at a county cost of approximately $276,000 per year and continues presently during and through this federal crisis. Five, today, we just learned that the U.S. Department of Agriculture released update, updated guidance to states confirming that it will provide covering, funding to cover 65% of benefits due for November, an increase from the 50% level announced earlier this week. Six, additionally, a district court in Rhode Island has a hearing set for today on a motion that calls for the USDA, Department of Agriculture, to provide full funding for SNAP benefits, meaning that they would have to utilize additional funding separate from the SNAP contingency fund alone. Seven, it'll be up to New York state officials to recalculate and load benefits for each eligible household on this, on this updated federal direction. State officials are reporting that benefits are expected to begin, to begin flowing between November 12th and November 14th. Though the timeline may be extended further to, due to the complexity of recalculations in the volume of recipients, because of the large number of beneficiaries statewide, it could take up to two weeks for all so-called EBT cards to be fully updated. Great, we have just learned today, maybe an hour ago, that OTDA, the State Social Services Agency, has scheduled a commissioners' meeting for tomorrow. We are hopeful that the state OTDA will provide additional information on when we can expect funds to be available on individuals' EDBT cards and other pertinent information. Lacy Trimble, our commissioner, will be at that meeting, and that, in essence, is what we know presently. We do have some other challenges. The county has no way to load EBT cards, that's the credit card, if you will, for SNAP recipients. EBT cards are loaded by the state government, so even if the time comes when the county must provide money to load EBT cards for recipients, we would not be able to do so without the state's involvement. We are also concerned that many of the temporary efforts undertaken by different counties and local governments may not be in accordance with laws and rules. We were told directly by our associates in the New York State Association of Counties that there would be no reimbursements to counties for any funds that might be provided during this temporary funding pause of federal operations. Bottom line, Orange County will continue to work with our partners to ameliorate difficulties for needy families. If a delay in resolution to federal government interruptions continues, we will ask the county legislature to come into session, and together, we will propose a viable solution to the circumstances that we face. Answer questions for you. I have also Lacy Trimble, our commissioner here, and I believe Mr. Goldman is here as well, our county attorney. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, and every legislator got a letter from the county executive, I think it was yesterday, if not the day before. The deputy county exec and Commissioner Trimble met with me this morning, and they both assured me that we are in good hands, they're on top of it, and that the food bank didn't ask for any money, and the only thing they said they might need is logistical support to move the food around the county, and that was offered to them, that we have the vans and definitely resources to assist with that if that becomes an issue. Any questions for the deputy county executive, otherwise looking at legislator Ramos?
On your last point of, in terms of timing, what does that look like? I think we need to have a fine point on that, because while we just wait and see what happens with all of these decisions, the 19,000 households in this county that rely on SNAP benefits are not getting them, so I would like some clarity, and I would like a commitment in terms of how long we're going to wait, because just to wait and see when decisions are being made is, is really not enough.
It literally changes hour to hour. We just heard about the OTDA commissioners' meeting about an hour and a half ago. Just earlier today, we found out about the movement from the 50% to the 65%, and just maybe two hours ago, we learned about the, the federal court in Rhode Island deciding, as we speak, what the level of benefits will be. They're seeking full, full reimbursement of the benefits. I can't give you anything more than what I know right now, but as it changes, I'll make sure that the legislature's informed.
Anybody else? And we have a meeting next Thursday as well to go over the budget, and the announcement will go out that any other business that the county legislature has to conduct, so if there's anything that needs to be done on Thursday, we can address that as well. Hopefully, this gets settled. I think the most important thing for all of us to do is tell your elected officials, regardless of what political party you're affiliated with, to open the government. It's crazy. They got the airlines, I mean, this is only one issue. The airlines are shutting down, which is going to destroy the economy, less flights, it's, no good is coming of this. You're throwing out the baby with the bathwater, is what I would say, and it's, regardless of what political party you're with. Legislator Luhon.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, and thank you for that update. I know you mentioned that the, that the, the food banks are currently not asking for anything, but I gotta tell you that, you know, over the last couple of months in particular, and this is something that we're seeing across the country, we're seeing as food banks are actually depleted hours before. This was reported in Maryland, this is reported in other states. When I talk to people at, at food banks where I've routinely volunteered at, they're telling us we're seeing more people, we're seeing, we're seeing a lot more community members who traditionally didn't go to food banks who are going there, so, you know, it is surprising to hear that that is the case, because that's not what, what we're hearing. In terms of, we're seeing the, the rising cost of groceries, we've seen that, that the food banks have actually been strained already coming in before this. More people means more, more, more demand, so I definitely would like to make sure that, that, that we're, we're really covering our bases when it comes to food, and, and I, you know, just kind of piggybacking off of legislator Ramos's point, you know, we have a lot of people in this community who are truly, who are struggling before today, right? The, the ability, the inability to be able to provide for their families is, is, is hour by hour for a lot of these people, and so I just want to share the sentiments that, you know, I know that we're trying to do everything that we can, but, you know, I'd rather have, have something come to the legislature now or sooner, and again, I don't mean to speak for anybody else, but I, I think that everyone here cares about those families that are potentially not going to be able to provide for their children. I'd rather had those numbers sooner rather than later, because we should come to, we should want to address that, not tomorrow, like, so that's where I'm standing on that. Thank you.
I did reach out to the food bank today, try to find out how much of that $65 million that the governor has put forward is coming to Orange County or the regional food bank, and they've yet to get back to me on that, but when I have that information, I'll share with the chairman, have him share with you. One other thing, too, it's not my, my area, but I mean, not only are the people who are receiving SNAP benefits suffering from this shutdown, we have numerous people in Orange County, Orange County residents, who work for the federal government who are going without paychecks, so the injury is deep.
Thank you, legislator Tortel.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Deputy county executive, in the list of what you said that we could and could not do, that we would not get reimbursed, my thought process along this lines was, I know other counties are giving out gift cards, I know that that's not really something Orange County had entertained, however, in, in light, in, in concurrence with what legislator Luhon said, we do have mechanisms to provide money to our food banks. Am I not mistaken? And also, we do have a roughly almost $200 million of taxpayer money sitting in the fund balance?
Well, I would say that, yes, we do provide monies to the food, food bank presently. I mentioned the Backpack Program. We, so we annually commit about $276,000 a year to that, for that program. We have a, a conference with the food bank a couple of days ago, that's when we talked about our transportation abilities and to work with them and that. They know that we're here, we, you know, confer with them, and when they tell me that there's need, I'll probably bring that back to you.
Yes, because I know that we have food pantries who buy their supplies at a, from the Hudson Valley Food Bank, they get it at a very discounted cost, but they still have to meet the demand at the local food pantries. So if there's a way for us to give extra to the food bank to help cover these food pantries that are being strained beyond belief and are running out of food before everybody in line has been served, I think that's something it would behoove us to do sooner rather than later, and wait and see about $65 million, and wait and see about this, and wait and see about that, when we have people who have no money on their food cards. Some of them are federal workers who have no income coming in, and now they have no food on the table. To me, wait and see is a slap-in-the-face approach by this government.
Legislator Ramos?
Thank you. So I'm a little, so the conversation with the food bank, you're saying that they only ask for logistical support, because that's not the conversation I had with them?
Well.
My understanding is that they're, they're in need of additional funding for the increased capacity, so seems like different conversations.
With them, not me with them, we had a Zoom call with them, Commissioner Trimble was with me, and others, and we discussed Orange County, Orange County's needs. We talked about getting, dispersing food when necessary. County offered its vans and personnel to do that. It was never a discussion about money.
Okay. Thank you.
Legislator O'Donnell.
Thank you. So you mentioned, I think, $276,000 that we already give to the food banks?
We give it to the food bank to provide for children in schools who may be food needy, and we've been doing that for a couple of years. We continue to do it now, we'll continue to do it through this federal shutdown.
We don't give any money now just to fund SNAP. It's strictly the federal government, then the state government, to social services.
Well, I think there's probably a share that we, Lacy would know better. We, do we?
Can you come up to the microphone, please?
Most of our social service programs are sharing with federal, state, and local.
The benefit itself is completely federally funded right now at 100%. We have a contribution to the administration of the program, so the staff who process applications in our office, but the other parts of the program, the money on the cards is fully federally funded, and we do the application, we send a file to the state, the state then authorizes and moves the money that they receive from the federal government to each cards directly. We don't have any part of that process.
All right, so, $276,000, maybe you could have the county attorney look into whether we can appropriate a loan to the food bank off of that $276,000. I agree with legislator Tortel that it's much better to give the money. I agree with Legislature Tortell that it's much better to give the money to the food bank than give actually gift cards because they can get the money and the food much cheaper, right? Buy it cheaper. But I would like you to at least look into whether we can forward money, not worry about the federal government reimbursing us, even though I think they will eventually. But if the county attorney could look into that and see if there's some way to forward the money to the food bank, just so the citizens know, we're doing everything we possibly can, right? And unfortunately, I won't be here next Thursday, so if there's a vote on this, I won't be here, which I know a couple of people are glad I won't be here for talking about the budget, so.
Go in favor?
We have conversations that are continuing with all of those agencies.
Right, okay. I'd just like to be able to, if we can forward money now rather than wait a week, I think that'll make a big difference because even when decisions are made, we already know that they decide today to fully fund it, they're not getting the money in three weeks. So I'd like to at least try to get the ball rolling and get some money in the hands of the food bank. And if we don't get that money back, 276, or four times that, $1 million, not a big deal. Thank you. Thank you, Chair.
Thank you. Legislature Luhon?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. And I just want to share the sentiments with Legislature O'Donnell. You know, it's really a drop in the bucket, it's really when we're looking at the impact that it could have on some of these families. Thank you again for everything that you do as well. I am really curious, you know, we're seeing a lot of municipalities that are also trying to step up. We've seen in Dutchess, we've seen in Ulster, we see it here in Orange County with Middletown and Newburgh. You kind of alluded to some of the municipalities that have kind of taking the, you know, a position on trying to helping their municipalities, their community members. I think that for some of us, or for, I think, maybe all of us, what can we do right now to help those, those people who are, who are currently, one, really, really struggling or might be, might end up struggling a lot more? Because it's not just, it's not, it's also government employees, right? Like, you know, in Maryland, it was actually, it was veterans, it was military personnel who were going to the food banks. Instead of ending at 1 o'clock, they were ending at 10:30 in the morning. That's trickling down to our communities, you know, we're seeing it in our, and again, to Legislature Ramos's point, it's completely a disconnect from what I'm hearing from our food banks where they're saying, we're struggling, we got a lot of people, and we cannot provide enough for them. And it's so many other needs that they're also looking to get. So what can we do right now that would be the greatest impact to avoid, you know, potential concerns? Because I just think that that's, that's also where we need to be looking at. I don't want to wait a week, if we can do, if there's something you tell us, we can do right now to help support people.
Give you my answer first, and then I'll let Lacy speak, but I think the thing that you can do most is call your federal representatives and tell them to get the government open again.
So, and I would just add that I'm hopeful tomorrow that I'm going to have a little more information in this meeting because there is a mechanism for assisting through public assistance benefits, which is a separate part that is still funded, which is partially reimbursable to the county. We're just waiting for the guidance document from the state on how we process those so we can get those emergency of food assistance benefits out into the community for those who are eligible. We don't know that 100% of our families who are on SNAP right now will be eligible, but this initial interpretation is that they think that most of our families that are currently receiving SNAP will be eligible for this additional benefit. So I'm hopeful, I don't know, but I'm hopeful that that will be tomorrow's meeting and telling us how we can process those, that we can get food out very quickly. And that will be a very quick process once we know what the application looks like and the codes that we need to put in the state system to get those benefits moving. I think that's our fastest solution and will reach the most people at the highest need because of that, because of the income requirements for that.
And, and sorry, but in, for those who do not qualify, that would be a mechanism that we would be able to potentially then just fund ourselves, but not get reimbursed, potentially?
For those, this is, it's a state program, so I don't know that we'd be able to fund it separately, but I hope that it will relieve some of the pressure on the other resources that we have, like our food pantries, so that they have more of an ability to serve those who aren't eligible for that benefit.
And just, and just lastly, and sorry, Mr. Chairman, the last, you know, thing was about, you know, the municipalities that are also currently kind of unilaterally taking positions on like using gift cards and so on. You had mentioned that you weren't sure if that was about the legality of that could, we're seeing a lot of municipalities doing this, and clearly, they recognize that it's going to have an impact on people. Is that something that we would be able to explore and then what would that look like?
Let the lawyer answer the legal questions.
Thank you for that, sorry. Or other mechanisms that might be similar and still legal.
It can be looked into. You know, I must preface this by, I'm prohibited from, by the charter from advising the legislature with respect to any matters, but certainly, you've requested that the executive branch look into this, and we can look into this and determine what is or is not legal. There are restrictions as to what counties are able to do, even through social services law, as to certain obligations that we could fulfill. There's some constitutional matters concerning needing people in the county that we have an obligation and can fulfill that in certain ways, but it's something that we need to look into carefully. And I assume I'll be asked to do so by the county executive, and I will look into that. Just one other thing I wanted to point out, and I'm not trying to minimize this at all, but as I understand it, and Lacy can correct me if I'm wrong, but the SNAP benefits are not given to everybody at the beginning of the month. So they are given to different people at different times between the first and the 14th. So at this point in time, not all SNAP recipients would have gotten a check by now. They may have, get it in the next week or so. It's still very critical, and I understand all the, the needs, not only for SNAP, but also with respect to the food insecurity that we have generally in this county and elsewhere. But I imagine that we'll be looking into this in response to your question.
Okay, next I have Legislature Tortell.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Lacy, you had first for the education of the people watching at home and who might watch this meeting at a later time. Can you please reiterate the amount you reiterated to me about how much we have in SNAP benefits per month?
The federal government provides about $8.5 million a month in SNAP benefits to Orange County.
And then, as a follow-up, you had mentioned families. We also have food insecure individuals and veterans who are on SNAP, receive SNAP benefits. So the money that you're talking about, will that cover them too, or just families?
The $8.5 million?
No, you were talking earlier about funding coming down for the families.
Oh, the public assistance funding? Anybody can apply for that funding who meets eligibility requirements, which is income and household size, similar to how SNAP is run. So each individual or family would go through a process of an application. Our hope is that they have said there is a simplified application to make it easier that the state is going to provide for us. And that's what we're waiting for, along with how we code it in the system in order to get those benefits flowing. And I'm hopeful that tomorrow's meeting will provide that for us.
Thank you.
Minority Leader Paduk.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I agree with everybody here, we need to help as soon as possible. The fact that Mr. O'Donnell mentioned about additional money, let's keep in mind, we have 1.2 million in our, in our, not undesigned fund, 1.6, in our contingency fund. That's for an emergency. Well, this is pretty much of an emergency, I would think, so whatever way we can make that happen, the sooner the better. I agree with everybody's concerns here. Thank you.
Legislature Emo.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. You know, I think, I agree with Mr. Paduk, I think everybody's on spot on. My fear, I guess, in listening to the discussion is that the bureaucracy, the weeds of the bureaucracy, to try to change SNAP as quickly as possible, as well as we want to do it, hurdles are pretty, pretty high. Jimmy O'Donnell, Legislature O'Donnell's point is a really hot to the chase suggestion, and we get some kind of money to the people who need it right now. I can speak on behalf of my constituents in the town of Palm Tree, probably 50 to 60% of the population are under the age of 18, 20, and at age, I think the average is 13 years old. A lot of children who are going to not get SNAP benefits, and they're like anybody, but they could certainly use help. And I think Jim, Legislature O'Donnell's point is a really good one. This is not giving it to people who maybe could work and aren't working, this is to children who can't have to get that kind of food. So I would hopefully follow that and try to find some way to just start that process while the bureaucracy works out the solution. I, I take, I trust you very much, Lacy, I know we're trying to do it. Let's just do something now.
Okay, and I just want to assure everybody, I still have a list of legislators I want to talk. We met for over an hour today with Lacy, and Harry, and Rick, and Betsy, and myself, talking about these issues, making sure that we're on the same page with the legalities of what we can do and can't do. So we are working on this, it's not something that's being neglected. Lacy's team is monitoring this with all the food banks, so I just want everybody to rest assured to know that this is something that is being worked on. Now I have Legislature Sutherland.
Thank you, Chairman. I just want to take you back. I would be in support of sending some money aside or doing what's needed. I hear what you're saying, I hear you're saying that we've got, you've got these meetings planned and whatnot, but I can tell you that my own church food pantry, we are serving twice as many people right now than we did during COVID. And the congregation is being asked every single week to do what they can to donate, take their own money, donate the food, buy the food, and everybody is doing what they need to do, and it's still, it's not enough. People are going hungry.
Thank you. Legislature St. Ganga's next.
Thank you, Chairman. I, I'm going to agree with everybody here because I was just going to bring up as far as my community and some of the churches, as well as our Lions Club, our Kiwanis Club, everybody's out trying to collect from anybody that they can that will donate. But you had mentioned that the program where people have to qualify. So we have our, you know, people who have already been qualified for the SNAP. How have we been impacted as far as the employees who have not been getting paid? Because I know West Point is a big section, Stewart is a big section. We have a lot of additional people that even if they apply, their incomes from, you know, just being, not getting this money for the last couple of weeks are going to disqualify them. That's a whole group that will not qualify for anything, that we really have to look at having that extra money and putting it there because they're not going to qualify. So, you know, making them fill out those paperwork, it's not going to happen. They're not going to hit that, you know, level regardless of what they do because we're going to be using their past income. So I agree with everybody here that we should be addressing something that is immediate rather than, you know, waiting to see how that's going to play out. I'd rather have the money there and not need it than to have to wait until it's past needed and we're just, I mean, like, everybody doesn't have anything, and then have to come and meet and try and figure out how we're going to put that in place. We need to be proactive on this, and we need to address it, you know, now, rather than, you know, wait two weeks, because two weeks could be the difference between, you know, a lot of people starving, and especially our children. You know, we have the elderly, we have, you know, and a lot of them are quiet, they don't, they don't have the same voices because they're not out of the house, or they don't have people who are advocating for them for whatever reason. They maybe don't have contact where they can get people who are going to come out and do that, some are homebound. So I would agree with everybody that we should be proactive on this. Thank you.
Thank you. Legislature Manuda.
Thank you, Chairman. So if I heard this correctly, the legislative, the, excuse me, the executive branch has their finger on the pulse of what's happening. And that was brought to us today. Nobody's out there telling us that they need food right now, that we're empty and we're in trouble.
Nobody's come to me today to say that.
Okay. Well, all right, I have the floor, thank you. So with respect to that, I believe in a plan rather than a knee-jerk reaction to things. I have faith in what we were able to accomplish through COVID and what the executive branch was able to accomplish through that period of time, which was an emergency. I have the same amount of faith of the items that you're handling now will be handled in the same, in a similar manner. Should something come to a head and food is necessary, we have the Air National Guard at Stewart Air Force Base, we have military surplus rations that could be used if needed. I don't think we're going to get there. What I do believe is that our federal government needs to stop playing games with people's lives and putting us in a position of having to even have this discussion today, okay? A clean CR was provided, simply needs to be signed. Watch CNN, they'll tell you that was the barometer for all CRs to be signed. So I'm not going to go on the national level of this, but I will tell you that this is something that we do need to have concerns with, but I have full faith in the executive branch and the fact that we have the benefit of having a commander in the US Navy as our county executive to be able to handle this. Thank you.
Thank you. Legislature Sierra.
Two, two things. I know the governor has declared a state of emergency. Is our county executive contemplating on calling a state of emergency? I know it frees up funds, I know it allows us to use and manipulate monies in a different manner. Are we considering that at this moment?
If, if circumstances become such that it's required, he'll do it, but not at this time.
And two is, you know, if you can keep the legislator, legislatures aware of what's going on, because I know that all of us know our districts pretty well, we know where the food banks are, we know where the families are in need. So when, if and when, you know, the program and who's eligible for these programs, if you can contact us and help disperse the food or the benefits, whatever, one comes first, I think, I speak for all of us, I think we know where it's much needed in our districts. Thank you.
Thank you. Legislature O'Donnell.
Thank you. So I appreciate everybody's comments, I think we're all on the same page, most of us anyway, overwhelming majority of us. Anyway, I'm going to make a motion to set aside $2 million in emergency funding, taken out of our assigned $174 million surplus, and to be used for food and food only, because some people think it's a food issue, some people think it's a logistic issue. I think logistics is the easy part to fix, but if the food bank comes and tells us they need food, then we shouldn't have to reassemble and worry about a quorum, right? Like I said, I won't be here, right? So I make a motion to set aside $2 million emergency funding for food.
Third.
Okay, that motion is out of order, we can't make motions from the floor like that. Consent resolution has to be filed with the clerk ahead of time, that can't happen. The plan is, we are meeting on November 13th, it's an advertised meeting for everybody. If something needs to be done at that time, anybody can send me whatever paperwork, give it to Gene, we can do it. The, right now, we're asking for patience because, like I said, we have been spending time today on this, and we'll spend time tomorrow on this, whatever needs to be done. But a motion from the floor like that is out of order, counsel?
Yes, thank you.
Just to clarify, our legislative manual does indicate that a copy of any proposed legislation or resolutions would have to be filed with the clerk prior to bringing it to the floor.
Things come to the floor through the committee process or by consent, so that's the only way. So we can't do that, and I have Legislature Tui.
We don't do anything by consent?
We do, file with the clerk before the meeting starts.
Okay.
Legislature Tui.
Thank you, Chairman. I agree with everyone here, we've got to get this straightened out one way or the other, whether it's with Legislature O'Donnell said, we do that in the proper channels. But I also implore Ms. Tortell, Ms. Ramos, Mr. Luhon, Mr. Paduk, and Mr. Sierra, I implore you to call our congressman. What is the holdup? It's been held up for 30 something days now, and what do they say when you reach out to them? And I'm going to hear everything back again. Well, it's the Republicans' fault, it's the Democrats' fault. Let's get it done, all right? Thank you, Chairman.
It's actually the Senate, the Congress has passed, it's the Senate. I have...
Excuse me, I'm sorry, the Senate.
Minority Leader Paduk.
We'll call Schumer, too.
Just a point of order here, a question. If you remember, two years ago, there was a motion made by the county executive to this board in a resolution to drop $2 million off of our tax base, and we approved it. So what's the difference with the legislature doing that, rather than having the county executive, is it okay to do that, but we can't?
The county executive is not able to make a motion before this legislature.
He sure did, we passed it.
I don't, I don't have a recollection.
He took two, he took $2 million off to tax, to reduce taxation. He walked up to the, to the microphone, I'm sure Mr. Poor remembers that, and he did do that, and we approved it.
I remember it, it was a filed consent, and he spoke about it before we voted on it.
He filed consent?
No, he didn't, the legislature did, and he spoke to the issue before we voted on Legislature Ramos.
it. Legislator Ramos.
Thank you. Legislator Tui, you're also an elected official and you can also call Senator Schumer or Senator Gillibrand.
Excuse me, the comments have to be directed to the chair per my laws.
Okay. Well, the comments were directed to us. So, everyone's an elected official in this chamber and everyone can pick up the phone. And we don't control the federal government, so let's start there. But we do control what happens here in county government. And I think that's the overwhelming consensus that I'm hearing from people on both sides of the aisle right now. And so, I just want to, I just want to share for full disclosure that I've been in conversation this whole week with the food bank, our legislative council, and the chairman on this issue because I was looking to put forward a consent resolution today to provide supplemental funding to the food bank. And for those of you who are not aware of the food bank's purpose and role, they essentially distribute food to multiple counties. So, it doesn't just serve Orange County. It serves more than Orange County because I know that's a concern. But it is very simple to be able to allocate funding exclusively for Orange County if we were to put some money aside for Orange County residents. That's one thing. The second thing is, to legislator Sierra's point, there has been a state of emergency declared in this, in New York State, which does have implications on the gift clauses with the state constitution that, that the county attorney may be concerned about, and there are other ways around that as well. But again, I just want to say, we do not control the federal government, but everything becomes local. Everything impacts people here in our backyard. So, while yes, I agree, and I absolutely would love to see the federal government shutdown end for the sake of many people, including, you know, all over the county who are out of work and out of pay right now, we don't have control over that, but we do have control over what we do here. And the other thing I would say is if we do decide to, which I'm in full favor, full support of, and that's what I've been trying to work on for the past 48 hours, is I would not take away any, any funding from the funding that we currently provide to the food bank. I would say that we would need to provide additional supplemental funding to the food bank, which, again, from my conversation with the food bank, was the request. So, I'm putting this all out there. I like to do my research. I like to be diligent before coming here and saying things. But whatever, what I, I think is just important for all of us, all of us here are privileged. None of us here right now have to worry about food. Not one person in this room. But we have to step outside of ourselves because we're public servants and we were elected to serve everyone.
It sounds like everybody in the room is in agreement. So, what we need to do is put a proposal together, as we will. Like I said, we had two lawyers working on this today, this morning, along with the experts that you see before you. So, it's not being ignored. The plan is Thursday. I know Mr. O'Donnell won't be here, but as long as there's, it's not bonding, so you only need 11 votes and when we discuss the budget. So, we're very prepared. We will be very prepared to react before Thursday. Hopefully, like I said earlier, I don't care what political party you're with, they need to fix it. It's a Senate issue. I don't care what political party you want to blame. It doesn't matter to me. Just fix it. It's ridiculous.
Just one question for counsel, please. So, if the county exec's office came here today asking us for $2 million, what would that process be?
There would have to be a motion made by one of the legislators present, and there would have to be a second. But without it being on file as a proposed new legislation, we would not be able to act on it, and the motion would be invalid at this time.
All right. So, if we had a natural catastrophe, another storm, Sandy, or we needed emergency funding, we'd have to wait for a meeting to get emergency funding? Is that what that is?
The county exec has money in his own budget for emergencies.
Well, that's the point I'm making. So, you got, you got money over there. So, we, we tried to get it to you, okay? You guys have the money. You have an emergency. I think it's the, you've heard everybody here, we'd like you to set up some type of fund with the food bank because we legally can't and you peers legally can.
If it's required, it'll be based on good information, as Lacy will learn tomorrow from her counterparts across the state, and as we will learn as more data comes forward. I don't even know what, what's going to happen at that federal court in Rhode Island today.
All right. I just appreciate if you give us like a daily update for, then we don't have to wait or vote on anything next Thursday. You guys, it's in your hands. You have the ability to get that money to the food bank today if you want.
The process will be a consent resolution on Thursday. We just don't know what is needed yet, but it will be ready and filed before the start of the meeting if it's needed. And everybody here has a right to bring that consent resolution, file it with Jean. I would prefer if we worked on it together, but as we started to this morning, but it wasn't necessary based on what we heard from our experts to move today. And that's why we said we have a meeting next week and we'll be ready to roll if we need to do it.
Mr. Chairman, if I may. Legislator Sierra.
Regardless of what, what party affiliation, I want to remind everyone that this government shutdown is affecting multiple agencies, not just our SNAP program. Edstarts being affected. More students, more children are staying home. And I understand we're all looking for the federal government or the state government, but it's the Orange County's responsibility to disperse social services. This is a social service issue. It's not a city issue. It's not a town issue. It's not a village issue. The government that's responsible to disperse state and federal funds is Orange County government. And I think we need to act. We need to act quickly. This is affecting all of us, every resident in Orange County. So, whatever means we need to come together, whatever resolution we need to do, I think we're all in agreeance that we need to get it done and get it done quickly.
Legislator Fagion.
Thank you, Chairman. Commissioner Tremble, just a quick question. One of the things I learned early on, sitting in the legislature, was that we would have legislative meetings. Our statutory committee room is right behind you there. And at the table, I would say, and the chairman's echoed it, the experts would come to the table. We're going to defer and call you our expert in these matters. Commissioner, not to put you on the spot, but a quick question. If you knew that there was a way immediately, right now, that this body could act, would you have come to the chairman? Would you have said, listen, we need X, Y, and Z, and we need it immediately? Is that something, is that a step that you would be, that you would have come and said immediately today, knowing the facts that you know as of this moment?
If I had enough information, I would. I need to, I'm hoping I'll have the information by tomorrow.
And my follow-up question is, if at any moment from today, yesterday, today, and going forward, that information changes, that we can be of assistance to you being the expert to help tackle this issue, you will come to the chairman and we will make those situation, that situation happen?
Absolutely. I want to be able to get a handle on what the extent of the issue is and how to best get the, the resources out in a legal way. And that's my concern is I want to get the resources out legally. I want to get the resources out so they don't impact people's future eligibility for benefits.
Commissioner, I'll defer to you as the expert in those matters and say to this body and everyone listening that yes, I will be willing to work with you as you present us the information, and that way we go forward in a smart and in a way that is best for our citizens here in the county. So, thank you, Commissioner. Thank you, Chairman.
And legislator Fagion, you should know that it's exactly what I did this morning. I called them, asked them to come to the office and talk about this. Majority Leader Benton.
Yes, Mr. Chairman. Exactly like you said, when the legislature is given the proper information, then we can follow the proper procedures.
Thank you. Anybody else? Legislator Tui?
Yeah, Chairman, I just want to make and put it on the record that I apologize for addressing my colleagues, my fellow colleagues by their names, and that I should have been addressing my comments to you solely. And for that, I just wanted to say that I regret what I said. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else? All right. Thank you very much for your presentation. I appreciate your time. Okay, so we had nobody signed up to speak on agenda items. So, next up is Majority Leader Benton.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I move to approve the minutes of July 1st, 2025.
Second. All in favor? Anyone opposed? So carried. Is there any, Majority Leader Benton, you're up for a consent.
Yes. I, thank you, Mr. Chairman. I request consent to place on the agenda, resolution of the Orange County Legislature relative to the application for certain grant funding from the New York State Office of Parks, Recreation, and Historic Preservation under the Municipal Parks and Recreation Grant Program through the Clean Water, Clean Air, and Green Jobs Environmental Bond Act of 2022, which is Article 58, Title V of the Environmental Conservation Law for the Purpose of Funding the Improvements to Cronimer Hill Park.
Okay, without objection, that'll be added as A5 on your agenda. All right. Now, we'll start with number one. It's a bond resolution requiring two-thirds vote.
Legislators Tortel, Tui, Ramos, Luhon, Paduk, with all Republicans as cosponsors. Bond resolution of the County of Orange, New York, authorizing the establishment of a new capital project for the refurbishment of residential units at Valley View facility, stating the estimated maximum cost thereof is $125,000, appropriating said amount there for and authorizing the issuance of $125,000 bonds of the county to finance said appropriation.
Second. Any discussion? Legislator Sierra is added. Roll call.
Benton?
Yes.
Paduk?
Yes.
Amo, Cheney, Ellers, Fagion, Luhon, Menuda, O'Donnell, Ramos, Revella, Riskevich, Sassi, Sierra, Stenganga, Sutherland, Tortel, Tui, Hines. 19 ayes.
Okay, number two is a bond resolution requiring two-thirds vote.
Legislators Tortel, Tui, Ramos, Luhon, Benton, with all Republicans as cosponsors. Bond resolution of the County of Orange, New York, authorizing the establishment of a new capital project for the acquisition of beds and mattresses for use at the Valley View facility, stating the estimated maximum cost thereof is $369,327, appropriating said amount there for and authorizing the issuance of $369,327 bonds of the county to finance said appropriation.
Second. Any discussion? My name, please. Minority Leader Paduk is added. Legislator Sierra is added. Roll call.
Benton?
Yes.
Paduk?
Yes.
Amo, Cheney, Ellers, Fagion, Luhon, Menuda, O'Donnell, Ramos, Revella, Riskevich, Sassi, Sierra, Stenganga, Sutherland, Tortel, Tui, Hines. 19 ayes.
And number three is a bond resolution requiring two-thirds vote.
Legislators Tortel, Ramos, Ellers, Luhon, and Fagion, with all Republicans as cosponsors. Bond resolution of the County of Orange, New York, authorizing the establishment of a new capital project for the acquisition of resident furniture for use at the Valley View facility, stating the estimated maximum cost thereof is $214,130, appropriating said amount there for and authorizing the issuance of $214,130 bonds of the county to finance said appropriation.
Second. Any discussion? Majority Leader Paduk and legislator Sierra are added. Roll call.
Benton?
Yes.
Paduk?
Yes.
Amo, Cheney, Ellers, Fagion, Luhon, Menuda, O'Donnell, Ramos, Revella, Riskevich, Sassi, Sierra, Stenganga, Sutherland, Tortel, Tui, Hines. 19 ayes.
Okay, number four is a bond resolution requiring two-thirds vote.
Legislators Tortel, Ramos, Tui, Fagion, Benton, with all Republicans as cosponsors. Bond resolution of the County of Orange, New York, authorizing the establishment of a new capital project for the acquisition of food service equipment for use at the Valley View facility, stating the estimated maximum cost thereof is $70,000, appropriating said amount there for and authorizing the issuance of $70,000 bonds of the county to finance said appropriation.
Second. Any discussion? Minority Leader Paduk. My name, please. Legislator Sierra is added. Roll call.
Benton?
Yes.
Paduk?
Yes.
Amo, Cheney, Ellers, Fagion, Luhon, Menuda, O'Donnell, Ramos, Revella, Riskevich, Sassi, Sierra, Stenganga, Sutherland, Tortel, Tui, Hines. 19 ayes.
Okay, now, now we're going to move to A5, which is the consent resolution on your desk.
Legislators Benton and Sutherland, with legislator Tortel as cosponsor. Resolution of the Orange County Legislature relative to the application for certain grant funding from the New York State Office of Parks, Recreation, and Historic Preservation under the Municipal Parks and Recreation Grant Program through the Clean Water, Clean Air, and Green Jobs Environmental Bond Act of 2022, Article 58, Title V of the Environmental Conservation Law for the Purpose of Funding Improvements to Cronimer Hill Park.
Second. Any discussion? Legislator Luhon. Luhon is added. Hey, roll call.
Benton?
Yes.
Paduk?
Yes.
Amo, Cheney, Ellers, Fagion, Luhon, Menuda, O'Donnell, Ramos, Revella, Riskevich, Sassi, Sierra, Stenganga, Sutherland, Tortel, Tui, Hines. 19 ayes.
Now, we'll move to number five, which is a bond resolution requiring two-thirds vote.
Legislators Tui, Tortel, Luhon, and Fagion, with all Republicans as cosponsors. Amending bond resolution dated November 6, 2025. Bond resolution of the County of Orange, New York, amending the bond resolution adopted October 2nd, 2025, in relation to financing the cost of the construction of park improvements in connection with the Cronimer Hill Park Tower Repair and Trail Improvement Project at the estimated maximum cost of $1,111,111.
Second. Any discussion? Roll call.
Benton?
Yes.
Paduk?
Yes.
Amo, Cheney, Ellers, Fagion, Luhon, Menuda, O'Donnell, Ramos, Revella, Riskevich, Sassi, Sierra, Stenganga, Sutherland, Tortel, Tui, Hines. 19 ayes.
Move to number six, which is a voice vote.
Legislators Tui and Paduk, all Republicans, and legislator Tortel as cosponsors. Resolution authorizing the filing of an application for state assistance from the Municipal Waste Reduction and Recycling Program for recycling coordination, education, planning, and promotion projects, and signing of the associated state master grant contract under the appropriate laws of New York State.
Second. Any discussion? Legislator Sierra is added. All in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? So carried unanimous. Number seven is a voice vote.
Legislators Sassi and Sutherland, with all Republicans, and legislator Tortel as cosponsors. Resolution accepting and appropriating funds from the Federal Emergency Management Agency to the Orange County Sheriff's Office for the Port Security Grant Program pursuant to Section 99-H of the General Municipal Law and Section 4.09 of the Orange County Charter.
Second. Any discussion? Legislator Sierra is added. All in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? So carried unanimous. Number eight is a voice vote.
Legislators Sassi and Sutherland, with all Republicans, and legislator Tortel as cosponsor. Resolution accepting and appropriating federal funds from the New York State Governor's Traffic Safety Committee to the Orange County Department of Emergency Services Police Services for the Stop DWI High Visibility Engagement Campaign Grant pursuant to Section 99-H of the General Municipal Law and Section 4.09 of the Orange County Charter.
Second. Any discussion? Legislator Sierra is added. All in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? So carried unanimous. Number nine is a voice vote.
Legislators Sassi and Sutherland, with all Republicans, and legislator Tortel as cosponsors. Resolution accepting and appropriating grant funds from New York State Office of Victim Services to the Orange County Office of Probation for the Crime Victim Assistance Program pursuant to Section 4.09 of the Orange County Charter.
Second. Any discussion? Minority Leader Paduk and legislator Sierra are added. All in favor? Anyone opposed? So carried unanimous. Number 10 is a voice vote.
Legislators Sutherland, Fagion, Paduk, Ramos, Stenganga, with all Republicans, and legislator Tortel as cosponsors. Resolution of the Orange County Legislature supporting Operation Green Light for active military service members in transition to civilian life.
Second. Any discussion? Legislator Sierra is added. All in favor?
Aye.
Legislator Luhon is added. Sorry, all in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? So carried unanimous. We move to number 11.
Legislators Stenganga and Fagion, with all Republicans as cosponsors. Resolution confirming the reappointments by the county executive to the Orange County Board of Ethics pursuant to Local Law Number 9 of 2018.
Second. Any discussion? Chairman, legislator Sutherland.
Thank you, Chairman. I just want to point out that these two individuals are really fine, fine people. I appreciate the county executive and I would appreciate, I appreciate him asking for the confirming of their reappointment, and I ask that my fellow legislators support this. Thank you.
Thank you. Legislator Fagion.
Thank you, Chairman. And to echo legislator Sutherland's comments, these these, these two and so many members of boards throughout Orange County that serve this county do so at no compensation. So these people give of their time to our community and our county, and I just want to thank them and ask all of my colleagues to support them. So, thank you, Chairman.
Thank you, legislator Riskevich. I'm going to abstain from this vote. Thank you. Legislator Sassy. Okay, so we'll do a roll call.
Benton.
Yes.
Paduk. Amo. Cheney. Ellers. Fagion. Lujan. Menuda. O'Donnell. Ramos. Revella. Riskevich.
Abstain.
Sassy. Sierra. Stiganga. Sutherland. Tortell. Tuwey. Hines. Seventeen ayes, two abstentions.
Okay, number 12 is a voice vote.
Legislators Ramos and Stiganga, with all Republicans and legislator Tortell as cosponsors. Resolution accepting and appropriating funds from the Federal Transit Administration to the Orange County Department of Planning for the capital cost of contracting with Short Line Transit LLC pursuant to Section 99-H of the General Municipal Law and Section 4.09 of the Orange County Charter.
Second. Any discussion? Legislator Sierra is added. Minority Leader Paduk is added. All in favor? Anyone opposed? So carried unanimous. Number 13 is a voice vote.
Legislators Ramos and Stiganga, with all Republicans and legislator Tortell as cosponsors. Resolution accepting and appropriating funds from the Federal Transit Administration to the Orange County Department of Planning for the purchase of cutaway buses pursuant to Section 99-H of the General Municipal Law and Section 4.09 of the Orange County Charter.
Second. Any discussion? Legislators Sierra and Lujan added. All in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? So carried unanimous. Number 14 is a voice vote.
Legislators Fagion and Paduk, with all Republicans and legislator Tortell as cosponsors. Resolution accepting and appropriating funds as a subcontractor to the Orange County Department of Health for the Healthy Orange Schools and Communities Program pursuant to Section 4.09 of the Orange County Charter.
Second. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? So carried unanimous. Number 15 is a voice vote.
Legislators Paduk and Ramos, with legislator Tortell as cosponsor. Resolution accepting and appropriating funds from a New York State Board of Elections to the Orange County Board of Elections for 2025 election grant program pursuant to Section 4.09 of the Orange County Charter.
Second. Any discussion? Legislator Lujan is added. All in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? So carried unanimous. Number 16 is a voice vote.
Legislators Ramos and Stiganga, with legislator Tortell as cosponsor. Resolution accepting and appropriating funds from a New York State Board of Elections to the Orange County Board of Elections for the 2025 Vote by Mail Grant Program pursuant to Section 4.09 of the Orange County Charter.
Second. Any discussion? Legislator Lujan is added. Minority Leader Paduk is added. All in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? So carried unanimous. Number 17 is a voice vote.
Legislators Stiganga and Paduk, with legislator Tortell as cosponsor. Resolution making a supplemental appropriation to the 2025 Orange County Budget for the Orange County Board of Elections for Poll Site Accessibility pursuant to Section 4.09 of the Orange County Charter.
Second. Any discussion? Legislator Sierra and Lujan added. All in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? So carried unanimous. Number 18 is a voice vote.
Legislators Sassy and Lujan, with all Republicans as cosponsors. Resolution authorizing the County Executive to submit the fiscal year 2026 annual action plan to the United States Department of Housing and Urban Development for the purposes of applying for, accepting, and appropriating certain federal funds for the Community Development Block Grant Program and the Home Investment Partnership Program pursuant to Section 99-H of the General Municipal Law.
Second. Any discussion? Minority Leader Paduk's added, legislator Sierra is added. All in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? So carried unanimous. Number 19 is a voice vote.
Legislators Sassy and Lujan, with all Republicans and legislator Tortell as cosponsors. Resolution appropriating additional funding received from a New York State Office of Children and Family Services to the Orange County Youth Bureau pursuant to Section 4.09 of the Orange County Charter.
Second. Any discussion? Legislator Sierra, minority leader Paduk added. All in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? So carried unanimous. Number 20 is a voice vote.
Legislators Sassy and Lujan, with all Republicans and legislator Tortell as cosponsors. Resolution designated Orange County Tourism as the Tourism Promotion Agency of Orange County.
Second. Any discussion? Legislator Sierra is added. All in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? So carried unanimous. We move to number 21.
Legislators Benelli, Lujan, Ellers, and Tortell. Resolution authorizing an increase in the hourly rate of pay for the 2026 youth employment participants at the Orange County Department of Employment and Training pursuant to Section 2.02L of the Orange County Charter.
Second. Any discussion? Roll call.
Benton.
Yes.
Paduk.
Yes.
Amo, Cheney, Ellers, Fagion, Lujan, Menuda, O'Donnell, Ramos, Revella, Riskevich, Sassy, Sierra, Stiganga, Sutherland, Tortell, Tuwey, Hines. Nineteen ayes.
Number 22.
Legislators O'Donnell, Stiganga, Tuwey, and Menuda. An act amending the appropriate Orange County employment schedules to create associate payroll clerk at the Orange County Department of Public Works pursuant to Section 2.02L of the Orange County Charter.
Second. Any discussion? Roll call.
Benton.
Yes.
Paduk.
Yes.
Amo, Cheney, Ellers, Fagion, Lujan, Menuda, O'Donnell, Ramos, Revella, Riskevich, Sassy, Sierra, Stiganga, Sutherland, Tortell, Tuwey, Hines. Nineteen ayes.
Number 23.
Legislators Stiganga, Menuda, Sutherland, and Ramos. An act amending the appropriate Orange County employment schedules to abolish principal account clerk and create fiscal technician at the Orange County Sheriff's Office pursuant to Section 2.02L of the Orange County Charter.
Second. Any discussion? Roll call.
Benton.
Yes.
Paduk.
Yes.
Amo, Cheney, Ellers, Fagion, Lujan, Menuda, O'Donnell, Ramos, Revella, Riskevich, Sassy, Sierra, Stiganga, Sutherland, Tortell, Tuwey, Hines. Nineteen ayes.
Number 24.
Legislators Lujan, Stiganga, Sassy, and Sutherland. An act amending the appropriate Orange County employment schedules to create the title of Fire Investigator Per diem at the Orange County Department of Emergency Services pursuant to Section 2.02L of the Orange County Charter.
Second. Any discussion? Legislator Tortell, Sierra, Revella, minority leader Paduk added. Roll call.
Benton.
Yes.
Paduk.
Yeah.
Amo, Cheney, Ellers, Fagion, Lujan, Menuda, O'Donnell, Ramos, Revella, Riskevich, Sassy, Sierra, Stiganga, Sutherland, Tortell, Tuwey, Hines. Nineteen ayes.
Move to number 25.
Legislators Menuda, Stiganga, Sassy, and Lujan. An act amending the appropriate Orange County employment schedules to abolish senior systems analyst and create HVAC technician at Orange County Community College pursuant to Section 2.02L of the Orange County Charter.
Second. Any discussion? Roll call.
Benton.
Yes.
Paduk.
Yes.
Amo, Cheney, Ellers, Fagion, Lujan, Menuda, O'Donnell, Ramos, Revella, Riskevich, Sassy, Sierra, Stiganga, Sutherland, Tortell, Tuwey, Hines. Nineteen ayes, Mr. Chairman, and the desk is clear.
Thank you, and we have two people signed up to speak. Legislator Amo. Can you use your microphone, please?
You can confirm this. A federal judge in Rhode Island ordered the Trump administration to release full funding for November food stamps by Friday.
That's great. All right, thank you. Our first speaker is Gail Jeter, speaking about Valley View. Just a reminder to hit the button until the microphone turns red.
Thank you. Good afternoon. I want to read an email that I received from the director who said, "I listened to your comments at the legislature meeting." And here's some information. He says, "The legislature and the Health and Mental Health Committee are well aware of the 120 beds, and that's four units we currently have closed." He, we report on this every month at Health and Mental Health Committee. The county is not trying to sell Valley View. Though when I grew up, the expression was, "Action speaks louder than words." But I'll continue. The reason why we have the units closed is due to staffing. We don't have enough LPNs at this time. There is a national healthcare worker shortage. To open another or additional units to the legislature, the legislature is aware of the need in the community to open our empty units as our waiting list is currently over 40. Now, to me, over 40 could be anywhere from 41 to infinity. So, the responses are very general, and they, well, I'll also comment on some of them. We simply can't take in more residents than we can properly care for. Now, my issue is the fact that, all right, now there are 225 residents from last month to this month. 225 out of a, at one time, over 500. Okay, so that means we got two more residents in a month. As far as the fact that there is a national healthcare worker shortage, that's recent. You don't come from 500, over 500 residents to 225 because of today, what's happening today. That took a long time to get down to that number. But I will express to you, because I do talk to residents, I do talk to staff. The reason why it is so low is morale. One issue was after COVID, the county received money for those individuals who worked during COVID. These workers have friends in other institutions. And when they spoke to the, to them, they received their COVID pay. The Orange County staff at Valley View got theirs three years later. And there were LPNs there who worked past 20 years, 30 years, and they were very content. But when they saw, when this happened, when they got their COVID pay, they moved on. Uh, let's see, what else did I say? The, so the staffing, I have some suggestions. There are staff members there who have called their relatives, friends there, some with husbands, wives, friends who have worked, who worked there as per their recommendation. They stopped doing that. They stopped recommending because of the issues. Now, I've never seen an ad on TV stating that Valley View needs more LPNs. I've never seen flyers. There are commuters, because I commuted to the city to work before I retired myself, who spend an extra maybe four hours going to the city and back. They would not mind taking a little cut in pay to live closer so they could have dinner at a reasonable hour when they get home. So I'm not sure how you are advertising or who you are speaking to, but this 225 is, is, you know, that's a disgrace.
Thank you for your comments.
I've had the three minutes already?
Actually, he's about six and a half. The buzzer went off quite a while ago.
Okay.
Just, just for your own knowledge, we offer a pension, health benefits, and a salary. I'm as baffled as you are why people won't come and work for us.